I'd like to open up the meeting for June 20th, 2023. Start with the belligerence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bills are all signed?
Yep.
Well, swapping out.
No, no, it's all right.
Just pull this up.
No, it keeps sinking.
It keeps going down. We're in the new jazz cuban in. Warrant bills, all signed. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 7th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update.
Just two things, because I haven't had a lot of time to put anything together, but looking to tentatively do our oldest resident celebration on July 19th at 4:30. It's a Wednesday, so I tried to do it before when you guys would be here anyways. It'll take about an hour. We're working with the Historical Society to put it together because essentially it's their cane, they purchased the replica. So we have a resident who is 97. We'll put a little blurb out there if we feel like anybody feels like they know someone older than 97 to reach out to me and we'll confirm if he or she's been checked. I'm gonna run that a couple of times before we announce and contact the person, just to be sure we've got the right individual. All we have to go by is voting records, so if somebody's grandfather moved in and they're not registered to vote, we might not know that, so 97 is the magical age that we have for now. And the only other thing, if you haven't seen, the town report books are out. And we need to think about town report memo for next year, because the fiscal year is ending June 30th, that's essentially when we want them to write their reports and make a decision as a board what you want to do with the audit report, as far as waiting for it again or not. But remember, the year before that, if you go back and watch the selectmen minutes, it wasn't in there, the year before, we didn't wait, and there was some follow-through. So we're gonna pull the state statute and what's required to go in there and then let you guys decide from there how long you want to wait after the fiscal year.
I looked at other towns' reports and they don't all have.
The audit reports.
Not audited statements, there'll be financial information in there. And so, let's find out what's required, but personally, I think the 100-page report, is that what we put in?
At least, yes.
I don't, I don't know if too many people that can understand it.
Oh, the audit, we tried to, yeah.
Or have the pages to read it.
Yeah, we put the short one in there.
It's, it's a very complicated document, so we ought to find a, my view, a simplified set of financial informations that we can put in there, you know, six, 10 pages.
Summons up.
That people can understand what's going on.
Okay, that's all.
Should be closer to the mic.
That's all I have for tonight.
Oh, that's all you got?
Yeah.
Okay, that was short. Okay, department heads, committee chair updates.
So Mary Grant's on the agenda, yep, there is, oop. He's on the.
Oh, yeah, he's on there. I'm sorry about that. Hopefully you've all seen that I scheduled two meetings for the Warrant Finance Committee, one for Monday, and if we need another day, I think it was Friday, Friday would be in the morning. I guess my question is, I wasn't sure with the talk in the past, is it just gonna be that one more and article?
So it's on the agenda, the special town meeting, and there's actually gonna be two, and we'll go over that with the board tonight. One is to appro, the other one is gonna be to appropriate rec funds that were.
That for the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, I just was wondering, so I could do the agenda on exactly what was going on. Who's coming to the meeting Monday night?
So Will Langley indicated that he would be there and Tom will be there as your liaison.
Okay. Very good, and hopefully we get it all done Monday night.
I got a question, Friday, what time is that, Friday morning?
I think it's 10.
Yeah, 10 o'clock.
Did you, did you email the people on the board to make sure they can make it, or, I mean, nobody work?
They all received the email.
Yep.
They saw it.
Well, I understand.
Dennis, for my conversations back and forth, and it goes out to all the members.
And was there any response back, people who couldn't make it? I mean, it's a weekday, that's why I'm just trying to.
No.
Okay.
I understand there are members, newly elected members.
Yep.
Of the Warrant Finance Committee.
Road Committee, couple of years.
In the Road Committee, who are looking to be sworn in prior to these meetings.
Yep.
And which doesn't make sense, because they're not able to vote until July 1st. So if we can swear them in, that's fine, and they certainly should attend.
Yep.
But they shouldn't be voting.
No, no.
Right? Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no.
We've had some people coming up.
There's some myths there, they're not understanding.
Thinking that they have to be.
Yeah, sworn in by the meetings, and so if we can get them done, great, if we, if not, it shouldn't matter, but hopefully, I would encourage them to go.
I would, I would encourage them to come and see.
Yeah.
Process, so, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Dan. I didn't see you on the, on the list there, sir, I apologize.
Nice timing, Dan.
I will.
So some of you may have seen this, one of you may have created this for us. I'm giving you a couple extra copies if I have them in the windows. So Dan Crapitz, Mary Grant Committee, Acton Community Picnic will be July 15th. I'd like to extend any official invitation to all of you and ask maybe if one of you would be willing to be a pie baking contest judge.
David, that sounds like a drive-by rally. Or Ed, I should say.
You got, I certainly don't need a decision tonight on it, but I wanted to put that out there, we are looking to have a pie baking contest, which means we need a judge. I have emailed the fire chief and asked him if he'd be a judge, I'm asking for one or two of you to be a judge.
I would, I'll.
Who is the Mary Grant liaison?
That would be Mr. Winchell.
Perfect.
So I kinda probably oughta do it.
All right. I think that was all I had, I just wanted to officially invite you and see if I could get one of you to be a judge for us. Thank you very much.
Do we have this, have we sent it to Mr. Corey to get on cable?
We have not, I need the PDF and get it to him.
Okay, perfect, I'll get it advertised. I think we put it on the, I'm sorry, David, I think I put it on the sign out there, Robin.
Yeah.
Is that what this says? Yep. Isn't it the picnic, isn't that what we put on the sign by 109, so we put it out there?
You're gonna have more than one judge for the pie contest, right?
We want to have three, I only have one commitment right now, and that would be you.
Well, because I have an allergy to nuts, so if there's any pies or anything with nuts, you may have to have somebody else dry them out.
Understood, okay. Like I said, I did email Chief Hand to see if he'd be willing, if not, we can find someone else, I'm certain, even if it's someone in my committee, so.
It'd be nice to get some department heads in there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, liaison updates.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't listed them out yet, I think it's still kinda early.
So I think we're gonna skip that.
Thank you.
Yep, old business, special town meeting.
Okay, so we worked on the warrant, just wanna go over with you guys, so in the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in fairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on July 12th, which is a Wednesday, right? At 6 o'clock in the evening to vote on the following articles, Article 1, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Article 2, to see if the town will appropriate $66,036.71 from the unassigned fund balance to be placed in the West Shore Drive Bridge and Culvert Improvement Fund. So this comes from the difference between what we have on hand, what was appropriated town meeting, less Curtis's bid, this comes up with the outstanding, no, the bills that we expect to get from ransom, which is up to $5,000, Langley Escavation Work, which is 42.6 and change, we've budgeted a couple extra weeks, and the property owners stipend $21,000, and then we put a $5,000 buffer, so that's where the $66,000 number comes from. And we'll be there, we'll put this together so that Tom can explain it on Monday night.
Yes.
But that's where that number comes from. Article 3.
Do you have the detail for the work that Will is gonna, for those various lines?
Yes, yep.
Great, if you could have.
For Monday, or you wanna go now?
Just email them to me and I'll.
Yeah, I'll make you packets.
Fine, thank you.
Really, it should be, we should be described as District 1, Land and Escavation, we want to make sure that this is being presented as a real commissioner project. We don't want to perceive that we put it out there as, you know, like we contracted it out separately.
Okay, I'll change the spreadsheet that we get ready for them for Monday. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $41,000 from the Recreation Capital Improvement Fund for engineering services and field parking lot improvements at the Route 109 Ball Field. So the $41,000 is what essentially was appropriated last year, we haven't spent it yet, there was, there was an article at Saturday's town meeting that rolled it forward but did not allow it to be spent, so we're just carrying that same $41,000 forward in hopes that we can actually start working on the engineering and field this year.
The language in, in this one said appropriate up to an amount, correct?
Correct, so both of them were up to.
I didn't hear that in the first one.
Wasn't there.
It wasn't there, but.
But it will be now.
It will be now, okay, great, because if we don't, we don't need it, we won't, great.
So $41,000 is the original amount that we had from last year, we just haven't spent it, it just got rolled over, but you need permission to spend it. Hopefully, we're moving forward on that project soon after July 1. Thoughts? I'll make those couple of changes, we'll pack it together for Warren Finance.
It's good, we don't have to make a motion to approve that.
No, that was just gonna be a draft, as long as you're okay with the numbers and stuff, and we'll see what they do.
So Dennis, his committee will get this later this week?
Yes.
There you go.
Awesome.
All right.
Okay, I'm set with that, we'll go down to new business, appointments.
Okay, so as the fiscal year comes to an end, a lot of our terms on committees come due, what I've done for tonight is only put together the appointments for the most vital positions that just in case anything happens, we don't meet next week, you've got time, I'm gonna send you a list of names for all the other committees, we need to reach out to them, make sure they want to be reappointed, so these are animal control officer, the health officer, the EMA director, the treasurer, and the code enforcement 911 officer, local plumbing. So those are the ones that will at least keep the town moving and functioning, and then we'll talk about all the other names after we reach out and make sure they want to be appointed.
So are we looking for a vote on this tonight?
On those, yes.
Yeah, you can make the motions.
Make a motion to renew the appointment of the animal control, all effective July 1st?
Yes.
Animal control officer, the health officer, EMA director, treasurer, and code enforcement officer, emergency 911 officer, and local plumbing inspector.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Can you just read their names out loud?
I was just gonna ask.
Oh, yeah, that would be good.
Just for clarity.
James Driscoll as the animal control officer, Victoria Erickson as the health officer, Richard Smith as the EMA director, Kelly Burgess as the treasurer, and Jason Sebene as the code enforcement, et cetera, officer.
You want to do a motion?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, you wanna, should we move on while we're signing them?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Fire Department postings.
So one of the things that was in the approved budget for the fire department was a new position, another, another full-time position, so Rick, sorry, Wayne and his staff have it, Wayne and his staff have put together a flyer, the Acton Fire Rescue Hiring Full-Time Firefighter EMT, paramedic preferred, list out the benefits, resumes, cover letters, everything will be accepted here at the town through July 21st. So more just an FYI, but he's moving forward with that position that was approved.
How many does that give him now, total?
So he has three full-times now, so this will give him a fourth full-time.
Okay.
You want your parcels right now, here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. Harris proposal.
So which is that?
Revail.
Did I just get one?
See.
Oh, I did, sorry about that. Revaluation, tax up rate update.
Okay, I think I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna handle this. All property owners should have received a letter this week from O'Donnell, who is managing the revaluation of town property, residential and other properties, which would provide an indication of the assessed value that they've derived, and identified some meeting times if anyone is interested in sort of questioning or challenging their valuation to be able to make an appointment with them, they do need an appointment, so you gotta call, and all that information is there in the letter, so that they can manage, spend some time with the people, it's gonna be held here.
Yes.
And there will be, I believe, six people.
Correct.
From the company there, so it should, should move right along, I think they have allotted 15 minutes for each, so that's moving along. As everyone has noticed, the valuations of properties have grown significantly. It's been 12 years since we've been reevaluated, and we all know what's happened to property values during that time, in particular in the last four or five years, it's just gone crazy. So significant growth in property values throughout the town, about a doubling in property values throughout, on average, so some went up more, some went up less, et cetera. Included in there was a estimate of the tax bill that they will receive, it's an estimate, it's using a tax rate of 6.99. And that rate reflects a preliminary estimate of the revenues we expect to generate from sources other than real estate taxes. So all of the other revenue sources the town has have been plugged into this model, and all the warrants that have been approved are the basis for the expense budget, and the tax rate is basically solving for the difference, and based on the valuations that they're coming up with, which by the way are about $1.2 billion throughout the town, pretty significant valuation for a relatively small town.
We're away from what, 600 million to 1.2?
600, 600 million to 1.2 billion, and it's pretty amazing. That is an estimated tax rate. You should know that in the prior year, which was 1195, 300,000 of undesignated fund balance was used to reduce the tax obligation, the tax rate, and this estimated rate that was put forth in these letters has, has not made any provision for use of undesignated reserves at this time. Where, that's an open question that I think the board will have to consider. We will also spend time refining those revenue estimates to make sure that, that soon we'll have the year-end actual numbers, and we can, you know, refine those estimates, make sure we have all of that. I gotta tell you, the one big number is investment income that is now being plugged in, I think it's a little over $200,000, where before it was $10,000. So that's, that's going to help provide relief here. We haven't, as a board, formally discussed this, but my recommendation would be that we get information on how the town performed with its budget in the current fiscal year prior to making a decision about the use of reserves. As you recall, we had a fairly large surplus last year, indications are we're not gonna have as large this year, I really don't know where it's gonna come out. We're not aware of any real problems in the budget, we just haven't done the calculations yet to figure out where we're gonna be. But we will do that, and last year we had to wait for the auditor to give us that, which, you know, the earliest is November, December, which means we wouldn't be able to use that in August, when we figure out these tax rates. We think we're gonna be able to figure this out in July and August, what the bottom line is. And the town, and the school has always been able to produce their financial statements, I think in July or the first part of August. So before we make a commitment on tax rate and the extent to which we use reserves, we want to be able to get bottom line profit and loss information for the town and the school, and then try to determine how much of that might we then apply to, as a credit to the amount that we otherwise would have to raise to taxes. So there's still some work to be done here, and I know the tax letters have gotten a lot of interest and a lot of anxiety, and, and I can appreciate that, I got one of those letters myself, and just, just know that we're very aware of that, we think O'Donnell has done a great job in terms of their valuation results. Speaking for myself, I just happened to needed to get an independent valuation of my property, and it came out right on the number. My, my, my independent valuation came right on the number with what O'Donnell had done. So if that's any indication, it's only one out of so many, but it's a good sign. So we're gonna let this play out over the next month and a half or so, and we'll be talking about this periodically here, so that there'll be complete transparency, and there'll be an opportunity for people to come and express their point of view, and I would encourage them to do that. I would encourage them to do that, you know, if they wanna go on social media, that's great, but this is the place where it can have an impact, is if you come to the selectmen and, and, you know, voice your point of view, then I think that is the best opportunity you have for, you know, getting the results you'd like to have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I happen to see some of those posts this weekend, I try to stay off that stuff there, and, but, you know, the, the problem is, is when you, just being in the field that I'm in, you know, I'm working on new sites all the time, I'm seeing what these houses are selling for, and, you know, you, you see all the listings on, you know, you're not buying anything anymore under $300,000, and if you're on a lake, don't even think about, you know, but, I mean, the average houses that we're, we're working on, just regular little Colonials down in Wells, and a little subdivision, $560,000 to $600,000, which that same house you could buy for $325,000 five years ago. You know, it's just crazy how everything's gone, gone nuts, but we have these people come in, because they're professionals, and, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be some adjustments somewhere, and that's one reason why we can't set our mill rate until we start seeing if there's a bunch of adjustments and everything else down the road, you know, when they come in, so, but we won't be too far off, I don't think.
I went back and, and Jennifer and, and the treasurer pulled out some information on what our tax rates have been over the last so many years, and my recollection was that the actual tax rate has been pretty, pretty benign in terms of its growth levels. But just to, for people to understand, if you went back to 2015, which was eight years ago, the tax rate was 1155, and today it's 1195, that's a 3% increase over eight years, which is an average rate of increase of .4%. If you went back over the last 12 years, the rate was $10.95, and that's a, that's a 9% increase over 12 years, which is the equivalent of .9%, that's less than 1% average increase over that 12-year period. So I think a lot of that, quite frankly, is due to the fact that we've had a lot of new construction going on in town, and very significant property value growth that has taken place during that time, which has helped to, you know, lower the tax rate increases from year to year, so personally, I think it's a, it's a pretty good track record for the town, going back 12 years to have basically less than a 1% average increase in taxes is pretty darn good. Okay?
Okay, now we're gonna go to the Harris proposal.
Okay, so this is a proposal that I'm gonna request that you sign, it was budgeted for, and it's hard for me to explain, because no one's gonna be quite as excited about it as, as our office, but let me try to give you a quick rundown. So any inland fishery transaction, boat, ATV, hunting, fishing license, remember, Acton is one of the top five sellers out of all 500 municipalities, goes through a program through inland fisheries called Moses, so we do all of our transactions through Moses. There's no cash receipting with Moses, you then take whatever transaction you do, and we go into Trio, and we, under a particular type setting, we manually enter it in, so much for registration that goes to the state, so much for sales tax, so much for excise, so much for the agent fee, each one of those transactions. So it turns out that Harris, for $1,100, has an interface with inland fisheries now, that if you enter in the receipt number from Moses into Trio, it'll carry all those numbers over. So there's no longer the human error of saying, what happens when you have a line out the door, you'll inadvertently put the sales tax in excise, and when you prove these accounts weekly and monthly, you know, and you're off a dollar, it's because you, you know, you inadvertently put it in sales tax instead of agent fee or something, you go back looking. So what this interface does is by entering just the receipt number from Moses, it just poof, all the lines, all the numbers go in the right line, it's, it's lovely for me.
How much is it?
$1,100. It's 225 annually, but that's the first time you'll see all the details, and I did budget for it, I just need you to sign. I'm happy to show anybody that would like to come in my office and.
Yeah, I mean, well, first, we got a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Harris proposal in the amount of $1,100 and an annual support maintenance fee of $225, as described in their proposal, June 8th, 2023.
Any public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Here, you wanna, do we all have to sign this, or?
At least three of you.
Oh, okay.
It'll make life easier, right?
Yeah, I mean, it'll just, you know, definitely prevent, you know, chance of error. You look surprised, Tom, when I said that Acton was one of the highest Moses out of all 500 municipalities, it's funny.
I just thinking of towns that have, you know, this is hunting and fishing, and.
It's the boats, it's all of them.
It's all the boats?
Yeah.
I know we have a lot of lakes in town, but.
Yeah, we do.
Which is why we have a $6 tax rate coming, or a $7 tax rate coming up. I, I can't, are there any towns that have a rate that low?
I think he was talking about when our assessors were here, there was Booth Bay, or something like that, they had, they dropped their tax.
Yeah, along the ocean.
Maybe it was some bagels, something like that, they dropped it, same idea, they got a lot of tax base out of the lakes and ocean and all that.
So top five?
Yeah, because of the reciprocity.
Little town like this, amazing.
Well, because we have so many non-residents in New Hampshire that will come for their ATVs and a boat, you know, I mean, we're, we're one of their biggest agents. How about the work that must produce?
When we turn around and change the law that you have to register your ATV in two states, it used to be a ride, snowmobiles in New Hampshire, now you can't, that's a big deal.
Okay, awesome, policies.
So you all have nice black binders in front of you?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, so what you have in there is a table of contents, oh no.
That's fine, I'm just giving you back.
Okay, so you're gonna need to bring this with you for many weeks, so.
That's fine.
What I'd like to do is pick, I say we just start right from the top and pick, so the abatement policy, abuse and molestation policy, and the acceptance of credit card, debit card, and the acceptance of payment policy, those four as a first reading for you to read before next week and bring any proposed changes. We'll make any.
We just did these last year.
We're supposed to be doing them yearly, unless we have it with the new board members.
Yep.
And we never made it all the way through the alphabet, so.
Who, who makes that statement that we should do it in?
That's a recommendation from Mamie Nusable.
But seeing we haven't made it all, and should we start at the end of the ones we haven't done yet?
We can, but I mean, there's two board members that haven't seen them at all, so I just figured, okay, let's start at the bottom.
Don't matter, we can do it.
What would you like to do, David? Do you want to start at the bottom?
Start at the front and work our way down.
Yeah, just start at the top.
Start at A and work our way to Z.
Okay.
I just figured we haven't gone through those ones.
Yeah, we're gonna get through them all this year.
Then they'll be quick.
All right. All right, so just those four. So if you can read over those first four policies, make any proposed changes, those four policies will be on next week's agenda.
Awesome.
Thank you. Please bring your binders back, no more copies.
It's too good for me.
We have an executive session planned for tonight, so I probably ought to open up public comment first.
Sorry, I missed the department heads, but Will Langley, District 1, Lee Roberto reached out to me the other day, he's the head of Square Pond Association. He wants to know if we want the lake drained before the project, like the water dropped down. And I was like, I'm not interested in that question, so.
I think that, I think to do that, we probably ought to talk to the contractor.
Because it's only gonna benefit him.
It's only gonna benefit him, it's not gonna benefit anybody else.
Well, if the contractor hasn't, that lake is very slow to rise.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I was saying, I don't wanna drain it, then people have problems with their boats, I mean, I don't.
Well, that's why we gotta talk to the contractor, see if it's a must-do. If it's something he doesn't need to have done, then probably this is why we'll have to leave it alone, but.
He didn't have it in his contract, did he?
No, I don't believe so, but.
So do you even wanna offer it, or wait and see if it comes up, or?
I think I'd wait and see.
Well, yeah, but let's, let's talk to the contractor and see what, make sure that we're all on the same page here.
Also, if you drop that lake for Labor Day.
Yeah, right, right.
Many people are using their boats well into October.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was thinking.
And they'll have to extend their dock significantly just to get to their boat. I, I don't know why, what is, what is.
I, he just, I, I don't know, maybe to help with the, I, I have no idea, I didn't, I didn't wanna get into it with him, so.
I do think that's.
But like I said, the only thing that's gonna benefit is the contractor at the end of the day, so.
If the contractor doesn't need it, then obviously we're likely to keep it, especially after Labor Day.
I, I believe they have a procedure to pump water from one side to the other.
Right, right.
So.
Get that bag set up.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're all set.
Unless the contractor says he needs it done, I don't think we should be worrying about that.
All right, I just thought I'd, thought I'd mention it, so. So I'll just tell him no, just tell Lee no then?
At this point, yeah, no until otherwise, or differently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That wouldn't be good. Any more public comment?
Nope.
Joyce, actually, hey, just a question. I perused through this, what is a truck town?
We have been listed as a truck town.
A truck town is an authority that Motor Vehicles has given your motor vehicle agent to register trucks over 26,001 pounds.
Oh, that makes sense.
We're one of the only ones in New York County that can do it.
That makes a lot of sense, except I think there was one typo.
There's probably a few, Joyce, you don't need to point them out.
No, but I think you're allowed to do more than 1,200 pounds. I mean, I know my car weighs more than 1,200 pounds, and.
We'll send it to you next year to look over.
No, thank you, but no, but I looked up what is a truck town, and it's a kid's cartoon place, no matter how you put it in to search.
Type in state of Maine.
Yeah, you know.
You don't wanna do that all the time.
Type in state of Maine, state of Maine truck town.
That's just weird stuff.
I put Maine, I did put Maine truck town in.
I'm impressed that you read that, that quote, Joyce, that's really something.
Well, you know, no, there, there are many places, this is very handy.
Yeah, I know.
You know? And one of them is, you know, where? And, but no, this tells you everything you need to know about town, and it's a good thing, and I think this is a good one. A typo here and there, okay, you're not being graded for, you know, your masters or something, but thank you. That, so the truck town.
Joyce, those were left there intentionally so you'd have something to find.
Oh, please.
At least have you.
You would think, oh, David, that's so nice of you. But I figured Jennifer doesn't need authorization for 1,200 pounds, but that's what it means. Jennifer now has the authority to do these big.
Yeah, like she said, you're the only one in York County.
One of the few.
One of the few, yeah.
Good for, good, good for us.
That's a big deal, especially for guys like me, cause I don't wanna have to go to Springvale Main Line for hours.
Hours, hours.
Dump trucks, we can do it right here now. Okay, any more public comment? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Do you want to read the announcements?
We'll do that when we come back.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll make a motion, we're going into public, I go into executive session, 405-6A-1, personnel issue.
Second. Are we planning to have any action when we come back?
I don't know what it's about, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't think, I don't believe there's gonna be any decisions.
Shouldn't be a public decision.
All in favor? You good?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session at 7:51.
405-6A-1.
That's a one.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, well, the announcements, Ed, you wanna do the announcements tonight?
Sure. Okay, we have June 22nd, road committee meeting at 6:00 PM, June 26th, warrant and finance at 6:00, June 28th, board of selectmen at 6:00, and if needed, June 30th, warrant[1788.51]